Okay, good evening and welcome. It is January 21st, 2020. I call the meeting to order of the school committee. This meeting is being both audio and videotaped this evening, and I would ask that everybody please rise for the bunch of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call to my left, please. Phil Fatsika.
Rich Fagero.
Sarah Chulio.
Gregory Thompson.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Antonella Richela.
Pamela Blair, assistant superintendent for business.
Kathy Salete, recording secretary.
Okay, thank you. We have some minutes for approval.
Two point one, I make a motion to approve of the January 6th, 2020 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. One more. Move to approve the January 6th, 2020 executive session meeting minutes. Motion made.
Second.
And seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Carries five to zero as well. Committee and subcommunications, Phil.
As I mentioned, and I'll keep everybody updated, we're continuing to put together a timeline for the search committee for replacing the executive director at the LPVAC. Right now, what we're going to do is advertise in the month of February with hopefully holding interviews in the beginning of April, the initial interviews, and then make a decision at the end of April to, for starting July 1st. I'll keep everybody updated as this thing evolves.
Great, thank you. Rich?
Couple things, I attended two meetings. The first was the collaborative committee, we're working on the calendar that we're going to bring forth here probably the next meeting, working on the half-days. And on the equity committee, we, I would think, pretty much, pretty much close to coming with recommendations to the school committee, I think, with the next.
Probably one or two more meetings.
Probably in March, yeah, we'll be recommending to the school committee. And I've visited two schools, I visited Berchlin Park, I needed to use my phone, and really enjoyed the tour. I visited English class where they're using Chromebooks, and it was interdisciplinary as they were writing on their science experiment. And Marilyn Robichaud said one key feature that she noticed about the Chromebooks is she has to email all of her students each weekend, remind them to charge them. Because all of them come in Monday morning, and they're not charged. So, I also, they had the author visit there, which was one day of assemblies, all grades. And I also visited the SEL class with Paul Nisdrick, which was quite interesting. He teaches the four core subjects, and very impressive what he's doing. From there, I went to Mountain View, and at Mountain View, I always enjoy the orderliness of the lunch block there. They have a very orderly system as far as where you can sit and where you, how you get your lunch and your ice cream. And from there, I got a tour by Mr. Part of the head custodian, and those, as I was saying before, the modules are in bad shape. The heating units leak, there's a huge sinkhole outside it, the roof is leaking, and the entrance and decks are starting to rot away. So, we really got to push down our capital plan with the town this year on their modules. And that's it. Excuse me.
Okay, thank you. Sarah?
Meadowbrook hosted a family night, I believe it was last week, I wasn't able to attend, but I was able to reach out to Principal Dakin, and she said it was very well-attended, and that there was a lot of positive feedback as a result of that event. And then, once again, we had some representatives from the boys varsity team this time at Biddy Ball, so it was, again, nice to see that collaboration between the high school students and our youngest athletes.
So, it was boys' time?
It was the boys varsity.
It was boys' last time?
Yep, so there was two weeks of the girls varsity team members, and then two additional weeks of the boys varsity team members.
Do the coaches come as well?
I didn't see the coaches there, but the.
But the players?
But the players.
Nice.
Which is great.
Cool, thank you. Antonella?
I attended another ELEAF meeting last week.
Big day coming up.
Yes, the gala's coming up, 25th anniversary.
Any tickets left?
There's probably like five tickets left.
Five tickets.
Seven tickets.
ELEAF.org.
It's not the worst.
It's not, yeah.
No!
What's the dress, business casual?
What is it?
Business casual.
It's like a.
It's like a.
What's what?
Oh, yeah, but you could get it through ELEAF.org.
It'll give you, it'll send you there a link, yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
We did it the easy way. Just hand her a check.
So, yeah, really exciting.
Great, thank you so much.
Good night.
Yeah. Okay, moving right along. We will go down to the assistant superintendents for business report. We have ELEAF speaking of funded grants for 2019, 2020.
Yeah, so in your package, you're going to see the list here. I would like to read off each, each one, rightfully so. So, the first one is Mary Jo Rannier and Kate Whalen, Whalen? Wallen, thank you, at the high school, microscope digital imagers, $3,005,4750. Bruce Goldman at Maple Shade, AVMR resources for math recovery, $1,260. Danielle Larkin, Maple Shade, Neuro Academy, project Lead the Way Experience, $2,225. John Wiedersheim, Maple Shade, television and recording studio for projects and news, Michael Fredette, Maple Shade, Mystery Science and Generation Genius, $1,750. Kevin Lennon at Mountain View, Robotics Bureau for Coding, $2,250. Alex Lennon at Mountain View, Green Studio, Green Screen Studio, $708.96. Jennifer Creelman, Mountain View, the class VR8 Portal, $3,188. Christopher Tyler, Mountain View, Programming and Robotics, $2,244.63. Amy Pelzik and Megan Bargatia at Mountain View, Sound Field System, $2,202. Steve Gueye, Mountain View, Mind Word, K-E-V-A, do you know what the contraptions, $989.45. Don Lemoine and Suzanne Collins at Berchlin Park, Google Drawing Tablets and Support Steam, Marilyn Robichaud and Elise Alfonno at Berchlin Park, Mimio Touchboards, $2,048. And the last one is Erin Ty at Maple Shade/Mountain View, Orchestra Instruments, $1,680. This totals $35,139.64 from ELEAF, so we are very, very grateful to ELEAF.
I think it's the highest total that they've given.
That is.
Is it really? It's the highest total, I believe, at least in my opinion.
I think last year was about $23,000, just to, yeah. So, this is.
And if you take a look at the different applications that were put in, it's all hands-on and inquiry, which is really neat. And just a comment from the holiday concerts, I think our sixth grade orchestra is the biggest it's ever been. They've filled the stage.
That's amazing.
So, I can certainly understand why they need some more instruments.
Excellent.
It's amazing.
I think Antonella should make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ELEAF-funded grants for 2019 to 2020.
Okay, motion's been made.
I'm going to second it.
And seconded, discussion.
Just thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero.
One question, do we, do we give publicity on this? Because I know that Long Meadow gets something in reminder all the time with their program. Does ELEAF do any kind of publicity with this?
I thought ELEAF does a breakdown of the grants, but I, we can check on that and just see.
Yeah, dude, because this is phenomenal.
I don't think that they do. They did just put an ad in, yeah, and a reminder for the gala.
Saw that.
But, actually, at the last meeting, they were talking about how they don't really feel like people in the town really even know.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't even know about them.
Well, maybe, don't they, maybe, don't we get a picture of all the award winners at the February, Frank Gala?
But don't they, don't they usually give the awards out prior to anybody getting, getting there?
They've done it in the past where they've awarded them during the gala. They've done it.
They've done it several different ways.
Where it's like a half hour before the gala begins, but they always try to get a picture at some point with the board members and so forth.
We should try to follow up enough, we can.
Because I think it's usually like the organization's responsibility to send it into the reminder.
It is.
And then maybe write a blurb that they'll copy and paste, but I think that's the way it usually works. But I guess, it's something to look into.
I'm going to find out tomorrow.
You're going to have a meeting?
Yes.
Coming down on the wire? ELEAF.org.
So, I can ask them tomorrow.
It is ELEAF.
It is.
Okay, Pam, we have gift donation next.
Yeah, so you have, you have.
We voted on that, right?
We did, yeah.
Yep, they voted on it. You have one gift in your packet from Maple Shade, and this is a sign-on incentive check from Grinnon Barrett, $1,547.75 to go to the Maple Shade gift account.
Who's got Maple Shade?
I do. Move to accept a gift donation from Grinnon Barrett in the amount of $1,547.75.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded.
So, then they use it as building base, whatever they want, building base.
That's correct. Yes, yes.
Motion has been made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries five to zero.
Great, get that deposit tomorrow.
Thanks, Pam.
Thank you. Okay, we have the FY '21 preliminary budget information.
Oh, did you want me to stand?
I can.
Okay. Well, in your packets, we had given you, you know, information, but obviously, over the weekend, I was still working on calculations, et cetera. So, as promised, I wanted to give you a little more information here. If we start at the top, just to remind you, in FY '20, that was last year, ELPS received an increase of $866,222, which was approximately 2.9% for a budget total of $31,173,910. For ELPS to remain at level services last year, we needed to have $797,257, or 2.63% increase. And the reason we wanted to put those there is because we are going to talk about some preliminary numbers, and we thought it was important to remind you, you know, of last year. Sometimes these numbers seem so large, and in the realm of things, when we're, when we have a $31 million budget, we're really just asking for minimal here to. So, as I said, their preliminary calculation for ELPS to remain at level services for next year is $804,653, which is approximately a 2.58% increase. I do want to remind you that this is a preliminary, I am still calculating things behind the scenes, but I feel pretty good about this, this number here that I'm talking about. I want to list out the percentages of increases there so that you could see, what is a half a percent, what is a 1%, et cetera. So, you see where this, you know, where, where we fall in there, the 2.58%. Going down the bottom there, I brought the 804 forward, along with the $291,276 of the, the school department increases that were listed out last in your packet, and that would bring us to $1,095,929, which is a total preliminary budget request of 3.5%.
Just.
Still moves.
Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Just for information and sort of frame of reference, last year, our Chapter 70 increased by 7.36%, which was about $828,000. So, that money came in, and you see that our increase overall was 866. So, the town and the school department obviously received additional Chapter 70 money. We hope to have the governor's budget tomorrow, so we'll have an indication at that point, you know, where our Chapter 70 may be. It'll also have a, it'll start to, over the next few weeks, become a little bit more defined how the Student Opportunity Act may impact, hopefully positively, our Chapter 70 as well. So, that gives you some frame of reference. Flipping from the new cover page that was just distributed, going to what was in the packet, you see just a summary of budget requests by school and district. Right now, they are only prioritized in accordance with what the schools' wishes are. So, this gives you everything that has been requested. Just to quickly go through, I don't know if people want me to walk through each of the request items?
Sure.
Okay. So, in your packet, you'll see the first up, Meadowbrook is requesting, this is a staffing request, specifically a preschool, an early childhood teacher. Currently, we have two preschool teachers at Meadowbrook, and we run four sections of preschool classes. Meadowbrook breaks down some of the recommendations that you get from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. You see that basically, when you're doing early intervention, what you're trying to do is create a preschool classroom where hopefully you have under 50% of the enrollment there for early intervention, and then you have peer role models making up the majority of the percentage. Mrs. Dakin and Mrs. Lowdy break down in their description sort of the swings that we see as we go through any given year. We advertise in the summer, usually spring, summer, and then again, sometimes in the winter for peer role models. But we also have to look at, as you look at some of those sections, we're not looking to exceed 15 in a section. And so, it gets some, in some cases, a bit challenging.
I found it interesting that the higher the class size, the lower the IEP count has to be.
Yeah. And when, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, but it's just the, it's, yeah.
Although, we're lower than DESI recommendations, right? Because it says with 15, the recommended is seven, but our, our procedure is with 15 up to five. Did I read that right?
Yeah, you're looking at less than 50% when you go to the description.
Right.
We have, in some cases of the 15, we have more on IEPs.
Oh, yeah.
Depending on the section.
So, 13, seven, yeah, I see, no, okay.
You know, at the beginning of the year, we were probably.
So, we need more peers.
Correct.
So, what, so if we go to, we'd go to six sections?
Well, we, yeah, we would.
With another preschool?
Would open up another class section, right?
So, two, two more, one morning and an afternoon?
Yeah, I mean, depending, if you went full-time, you would have one morning, one afternoon.
Isn't that the request, though?
That is the request, yeah.
Do we anticipate there'll be that many more students? Do we turn students away?
We only.
Peers?
When we hit, yeah, only the peer role models, we get a waitlist. You can't turn away early intervention.
Right.
So, I believe what, what they're saying happens is that at the beginning of the school year, the ratios are.
Okay.
Are okay. But as the year then goes, and those kids are turning closer to three, and they get more students in, we have to take those students in. So, the ratio is, is really skewed, and.
And once the year's started, even though you advertise for peer role models, you don't necessarily.
No, no.
They're already in danger.
Do we, we charge tuition for the peers?
We do.
How much is that?
Two, 180, I'm trying to remember if it's 180 or 260. I have two numbers in my head.
Yeah, we don't have the.
For what?
Oh, no, I'm so, so sorry, I think it's like.
Well, rather than give you a number that's incorrect.
But for the year, what's the?
I think it's like $1,800 for the, for the year, yeah.
So, if we add.
And then if it's paid up front, it's 1,700, I believe.
Okay, so if we added 20 more peers, that's 36,000.
But you'd still have to add some type of staff.
Right.
As you look at the recommended, when the group size goes up past 16 to 20, you're still adding staff.
No, what I'm saying, only add, if you added two sections of 15, that's 30 kids.
Correct.
And if 20 of them are peers.
You're talking about adding two more sections?
Isn't that what we're talking about doing?
Right, I thought you were looking at, sorry, I apologize.
No, I'm just, so we're going to, if we were going to have more peers, right? If we add two more sections?
Then they're going to pay, yes.
So, there would be some offset in tuition?
Yes, to help with paying for the teacher, that's correct.
I apologize.
So, that's 36,000.
Wouldn't it be an offset, is that teaching need a power?
We dedicate five, I would, I, we dedicate five and up to six, depending on years, to the preschool. So, I think we would have to look at how we're assigning pairs for next year, depending on what our staffing's going to.
Because Mr. Thompson's request is valid in that if we, we're charging tuition.
Yeah.
It, of course, is not $65,000, it's actually closer to maybe $35,000.
Yes, that's a good point, yep, yep.
That would be contingent upon getting.
Getting all the peer role models.
All the peer role models.
Peer role models, yeah.
Well, we'd have to, though, because.
I think that's what they're saying, is that.
I think we would.
That's the intent, but then it falls off.
Your, your best chance of doing that is when you're advertising late spring and in the summer, when people are looking to place.
We wouldn't have any trouble filling those slots.
If we had them immediately open, I don't think we would.
Right. 2,000, 1,800 dollars a year, I don't think.
They're saying we gain during the year.
We gain during the.
We gain IEPs, yeah, you gain the IEPs.
Not necessarily the peers.
Yeah. So, yeah, we, we would have to calculate that offset.
So, I can do calculations for the next discussion, reduce that appropriately.
Yeah, sorry about that, I thought you were going a different direction on that.
We're on the same page.
So, then, they also put in a look at probably six years ago, possibly seven, we had a request from a reading specialist to reduce from a full-time equivalent to roughly a .5, due to some family situations. It was right around the same time that we had a couple challenging budget years, one in which we were reducing our budget. And so, I think it fell in line with some of the things we had to do anyway, but we've never looked since then to increase that back to what was an FTE, a full FTE.
You know, when I read this, I, I was more impacted by the personal than the professional reasoning here.
Right.
That she was part-time, and now she wants to go back full-time, because the family situation has worked out. I just, I didn't feel the professional reasoning was as strong, so I'm a little bit.
Yeah, it's, it certainly has an element of personal request to it.
And the other issue is then it becomes an FTE versus a part TE, which is eligible for benefits.
I think this positions.
She already has benefits.
How?
It's part of the, because it's part of the Unit A contract, that if they're a half-time teacher, they qualify.
Oh, really? Is it that time?
Well, there's two, two definitions, I think it's over 20 hours, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Over 20 hours, but in the Unit A contract, .5 or above goes to benefit eligibility.
So, that portion is irrelevant, because she.
Already is eligible.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Mountain View and Maple Shade are, this is a request, actually, they put in last year, and it's looking at.
Actually, this is through the fourth year.
Yeah.
Yeah, you are around the last few years. We share a literacy coach and a math coach between grades three through five, and that's been working. The challenge that they start to outline here is that when you deal with literacy, the coach obviously is working well in both schools with our staff, and many times with our students as well as modeling certain lessons, but we also have in both schools reading specialists that can then carry out intervention plans and really start to implement certain things that they identify. We don't have that same support in math. So, what this would do is allow the coaches to start to implement interventions, the math coaches, because you would then have one in each building.
Okay.
Okay. Then the next request, this is more of a building request. As we continue to work with not only our own police department, but also our state police, and we do different drills, basically, we usually come away with many recommendations of what we can be doing.
You skipped a priority too, Mr. Smith, yeah.
I apologize.
Social, emotional mentor.
Social, emotional.
Sorry, I jumped ahead, yep, I was on the third priority. Hold that thought. Moving back to their second priority, what they're looking at here, as you know, last few years within our own budget, we have looked at usually contracted services, and we've tried to free up approximately $60,000, which we then distribute over the five schools based on enrollment. That money has been used by the schools to do different things to help provide more support socially and emotionally for all of our students. In years past, it's been used for professional development, we've, we've purchased some curriculum in some schools, and a few of the schools the last few years have looked at hiring usually students that are getting into counseling, and they hire them on an hourly, temporary employment situation, and they work, the students come in and they work with our counselors, and they start to mentor specific students who through, say, the fall and early winter have been identified by staff as maybe needing a mentor, someone with whom, you know, a few times a week, they can talk about not only organization, but, you know, how their day's going, how they might have a better outlook in terms of just preparing for their day, different things. And that's worked pretty well. And so, what Mountain View and Maple Shade are looking to do is make that position now a full-time shared, or actually .8 shared position between the schools. No longer use the, I think they roughly each have about $5,800, if I'm correct, somewhere in there.
Somewhere around there.
That they get from that $60,000, but actually budget for a .8 position where someone who has a counseling degree can support in that role. It's sort of going more towards the idea of an adjustment counselor, and we have adjustment counselors at the high school and at the middle school.
This is in addition to the transition program there, which is our SEL program, correct?
Yes, this will be in addition, right.
And the $5,800 would not go towards this?
We would use that money, they're offering that as a way to help, so it's $13,000, where you see that they receive, so it's a little more than $5,800, they receive $13,000.
Are we going to continue to receive that?
Well, they're offering it as a way to mitigate Masters VIII, so that's why they've reduced the price there.
That's why the number, and why a .8 versus a 1?
That's a good question, I don't know.
They, they put in two days a week from every school, so that's just why, so I took the.
But would it be harder to find someone on a .8, or not necessarily?
It might be, yeah. It depends.
Just if you're looking at it from a benefits standpoint, they're already getting the benefits, so what's the, the other day?
Right. Well, it's just, it's increased money.
Well, yeah, but I, I understand that.
So, either way, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, either way.
Okay.
I'm sure that they would love to get a 1.0 instead of a 0.
I mean, certainly, in everything that's going on statewide around, and actually really nationwide, having just attended district management groups conference around social, emotional support and education, these are now very competitive jobs.
Yeah.
So, that's a good point.
I forget, what does MTSS mean?
Multi-tiered Support System. Basically, in Massachusetts, it's not only a best practice that's going across the nation, but Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is asking districts to make sure that they have a robust, multi-tiered support system for students. We have a lot of different support processes and systems in place. Now, what we're doing with our MTSS team, if you will, is starting to organize that better so that it makes sense at each school. You can look at each school and say, okay, here are the different programs and support systems we have that a student, depending on their needs, can access. It's another acronym in education, Mr. Fagero.
To confuse people.
We're famous for.
To confuse people.
Yes, oh, yeah.
And that's, although, there's a lot of training around it, that's, I guess, somewhat of an unfunded mandate, but we have, we have most of the systems, we already have in place, it's now organizing them better and making sure that you're utilizing your expertise in each building to the best and most, in the best and most efficient way. We're good?
Yep.
Okay. So, going back to the third priority, which I think I was doing a really nice job of telling.[1780.32]
Yeah, you were.
Before I had to review, so I apologize for the confusion there. So this is a recommendation that has come from, as we do drills with, um, our own police department and fire department and the state police, this is something that, um, each year, they give us, um, different recommendations, and so at, um, Maple Shade and Mountain View, you have a number of classrooms with, um, a lot of glass, basically. And so, uh, when we go into a lockdown procedure, you're darkening the building, you're locking the door, but if you don't have a blind to put down, it limits, you know, obviously both the amount of light, it increases the light that can come through, which then might, um, you know, shine at least at the bottom of the door out to the hallway, it also makes you very visible from the outside. So this is looking at outfitting classrooms with window blinds. One of the other things that you may have seen a recommendation on, um, if you've come during the day to either L C A T or Student Support Services, you see almost like a, a mirror as you're approaching the door. So that's, um, a film that, uh, was recommended that does actually help strengthen the glass from shattering, but it also makes it, um, at least during the day, you're unable to look through and see what's going on inside. Um, it reverses at night, so as you're walking out tonight, you'll see, you're going to see yourself walking to the door.
I've noticed that.
So, and so, you know, and we go to school during the day, so that's good. Just know that it reverses at night. So that's another item, these are, these aren't necessarily capital planning items, but they're items that we, you know, we, when we can, we want to start to budget for and move forward on. One of the things that we've done over the years, also in strengthening security in our building, is all the locks have been, um, not only made uniform so that we have the same master locks throughout all the buildings, but, um, or key set, rather, throughout the buildings, they can be locked now easily from the inside and quickly. Is, um, one of the things you learn in safety planning is you have to plan for the fact that you're, in a real situation, you're going to have a ton of adrenaline flowing through your body, which then makes small motor control somewhat challenging. Anyway, that's, that's where this is coming from.
Okay.
Okay. Um, window blinds, and then I believe the next one is our curriculum.
Curriculum.
So this is one, yeah, that has been on the, um, requests for, simply put, because you've, you've heard this in years past, we have, and kudos to this committee for doing it probably five years ago now, we've had a curriculum renewal process, but five, six years ago, we didn't necessarily always have money tied to that process. The committee voted, uh, during that budget development process to put a line item of roughly a hundred thousand dollars. Most often, we have two, um, departments going through curriculum renewal. In some cases, you might have three, and so you can exhaust, um, depending on what they've researched in the previous year, excuse me, you can exhaust that hundred thousand pretty quickly. So those are, right now, um, all the, the new budget requests for this, um, budget development process. Right now, they're not prioritized, uh, with the exception of priority by school.
Right, well, we do need a little, a little more information, I think, especially in Meadowbrook Priority One, we need a little more information.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it was mentioned about, uh, priority number two, Maple Shade, Mountain View, about a little more information there, about going full-time.
Okay, going full-time.
I would, I would ask for the window blinds, if that's something that we can keep, um, present, maybe as, as our budget develops over the course of the year, that's something maybe we could address in either a partial way or.
Well, and I think it's going to be problematic to request that as a budget request, because it's not an ongoing request, it's a one-time.
It's a one-time thing.
And I think, I think the council might bucket that.
Well, it doesn't mean. I know, I, I know when the, um, subcommittee meets, trying to subcommittee meets periodically, they take a look at that figure.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying to request that as a budget item is problematic, but it's, it's, capital needs to be twenty thousand?
Yeah, it doesn't mean capital.
I know it doesn't mean it, but I, I don't know, I, I just foresee town council bucking at that.
Try to incorporate that into work.
It's a one-time expense.
Right, I don't really see where it fits in, I understand what the need is, but I don't see where it fits in in a budget discussion. Because of the, you know.
Yeah, I don't, but I don't know how else we would fund it, how else would we fund it if we didn't do, put it in our operating budget?
Excuse me. You want to take that?
Sure, I was just going to suggest, each school has a rental revolving account as well. Also, they have their gift account, so there, there are different funding sources that a principal has. We can certainly, as the school year goes on, and I think what Mr. Pacheco is saying is, as, as we meet and, uh, oh, and I have a clock drop too, I just started up.
I have a clock.
Oh, okay. So, so possibly we could end up funding that in, in our own operational budget.
Yeah, I just, like I said, I, I understand the need, but I just don't see it.
Bringing it forward.
Bringing it forward, because it, it's, it's in that in-between area where it's not twenty thousand, doesn't mean a capital expense.
But it's a capital expenditure.
Right.
It's a capital expenditure.
It's a capital expenditure to the criteria, as a threshold, so.
Jeez. Thank you. There you go, Mr. Pacheco.
So I think, you know, that's something, maybe just take it out of there, we'll deal with it.
Take it off of there, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the other thing is, is we're, we may be asking for three and a half F T Es, which is a little bit much, I think.
Yeah, right, right.
So, I mean, we'll have to see how this.
You'd have to break it down, um, really by school, and what we would do is start to look at, you know, what's going on in the rental account, how are we doing with supply money, that kind of thing. And that's what you might be able to attack it. The figure they have here is combined.
So, they have fifteen is for two schools.
Yes, that's five schools, yes.
Right.
So there's nothing for Burtland or the high school?
No, Burtland and the high school, um, we, we always talk as a, a leadership team, and we understand that we're always trying to be fiscally responsible, but also make sure that we're doing the best by all of our students and families. Right now, we seem to be in a good place with the new hires over the last few years, completing our social, emotional, um, program, basically K to twelve, but that started, if you remember, at Burtland, and last year we were able to place someone at the high school, but we also sort of reinforced, if you will, um, Meadowbrook and Mountain View had a program that we've started to tweak to make it go basically K twelve. Um, so they, they were, you know, could they put in a request? Sure, we can always put in a request, but we, we talk about that as a leadership team, and we always want to forward what we feel are the most, um, important and, um, most effective in moving the system forward and supporting our students.
As long as there's an understanding there that nobody's getting left out of the discussion.
No, they always have, they all have the option.
Okay.
But we did talk about that.
All right. Did we also talk about, um, Chromebook renewal in our operating budget? We had talked about it in capital versus operating.
We, right now, the Chromebook renewal, um, is sitting in I T's capital, and, um, we're at the numbers that we had discussed both with school committee and town council last year. So it, it went down from, once we made that initial purchase.
Yeah.
Which I think was up over two-hundred-and-some-odd thousand dollars, it dropped to about a hundred and five thousand, I think. I could be off a little bit on that number. And that sits in capital, that's renewal, um, for Chromebooks, uh, as well as I think he's got a renewal line item for things like cameras and, um, other things that are used around the town.
So it's all wrapped in, to, it's all wrapped in that?
He can break it out for each, each of the items, but, but there are renewal line items in the capital budget there. Right.
Okay. And do we have a timeline from town manager yet?
Um, we don't have an official timeline, but, uh, basically, we were hoping to, between this meeting and next meeting, provide them at least with the, um, town spreadsheets that they provide us. And then, within the next, I think, three, four weeks, I know that the town council probably will look to schedule a time where school committee and town council meet to discuss priorities and budgets as a whole.
Okay.
Well, per the charter, that has to take place anyway.
Right.
Is there a date?
It's not really, it's not really, you know, a date out there, it just says that, you know, we will meet with them.
I, I think town council, so let me add to that, um, would be open to meeting, uh, because the, the clerk's office is also involved, and, um, they would be open to meeting, you know, in the next few weeks. They even threw out the end of January, but I knew that we would be, um, we probably won't be finalizing some of this until the February meeting.
Right.
So, sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Um, if you have dates that you want me to, right now, the, um, clerk's office has asked, you know, are there any dates that, uh, we can forward them, so we can certainly do that?
Well, if we talk about the, what'll be twenty-seventh and the four, what do we meet, the fourth of February?
Fourth of February, right, is that our next meeting?
Tuesday, the fourth or fifth.
Third and the twenty-fourth.
So sometime after the third.
They could meet on the fourth, actually.
Yep.
I, I think.
Do they meet right after, the day after us?
They usually meet right after.
Are they meeting today? No, they're not today.
Well, they meet.
Oh, because it's Tuesday.
They're week off?
They're week off.
Yeah. Okay. They're on the eleventh?
No, all right, so if we're meeting on the third, we can meet on the eleventh.
So maybe we'll, you want to forward that?
I can forward that, yep.
Be ready for that. Okay.
Thank you.
Good discussion.
Thank you. All right, so I will, um, request more information on Meadowbrook's, uh, preschool situation and, um, get more information on the social, emotional counselor. And we'll come up with a plan around the blinds.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we could reach out to some local, like, law enforcement agencies, see if there's some grant that maybe we can apply for, for that?
Sure.
Maybe mass police, the D A's office, local. Local authorities, just to see, or even any of the connections, maybe through like the Sandy Hook Promise, if they know of anything that might be able to.
Right.
Help us to find someone.
Falls right in line with.
If falls in line with their.
Possible, sure.
Their mission and, and the partnership.
That makes perfect sense, we'll see what we can.
Just a check.
Yep.
At least we've exhausted that option before we have to find another funding source.
Well, maybe you reach out, if you're going to go that route, maybe you reach out to Congressman Richie Neal's office and see if there's any federal money around too.
Just a kind of check.
We'll take a look at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have next, new business, high school science team, the robotics world championship in Louisville.
So this is an update, um, for the high school science team, um, their robotics competitions. Uh, they are looking to go to Southern New England Championships, uh, March fourteenth and fifteenth. Depending on how well they do there, they would, um, hope to qualify, uh, some of their teams for the, um, Worlds, which, uh, I believe are taking place again in Louisville. We've, uh, approved their trips that have taken place prior to this, this is now an update, because a lot of these trips are out of state.
If this is during vacation, our school days, it goes to twenty-second of April to the twenty-sixth, is that vacation time?
So the twenty-third, I believe, is the end, uh, no, that's February break. We'd have to take a look at that, generally, it's, it's right at the end of break, going into the next week.
Because that's the last week of. It's the last full week of April.
So my guess would be then it's going into the final week, uh, which would be after vacation.
Yeah, I think it's the week after vacation.
Who misses two days of school?
Yeah.
Generally, um, I think the most we've ever had qualify were four teams, but generally, we usually have, you know, maybe two teams, so you're talking two to three students per team. Plus chaperones.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the high school science team twenty-twenty Vexwell Brooks World Championship, April twenty-second to April twenty-fifth, pending successful performance at the New England Championship.
Okay, motion made.
Second.
Second discussion, do you have the aids?
Yeah, Frank Page has got it.
Yes, that was a break.
Oh, so it didn't.
Oh, it's a break, okay.
Thank you.
Is this Frank Page's, uh, penmanship? I mean, my guy.
Why, you going to talk to him about it?
Look at that.
Looks like his.
That's an autograph.
He must be a lefty.
He's on the run.
I mean, you can read that.
Yeah, I can, I should read it.
Okay.
It's better than mine.
Yeah.
I want to talk. Uh, so we have motion made and seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay.
That carries five to zero.
Thank you.
That's the block for that.
Yes.
Yeah, they, they really, uh, are incredible, if you've seen some of the competitions. It was a lot of fun last year on, be able to highlight that on mass appeal.
Oh, that's funny.
Yeah, it was a good time.
It's not so often, you know, you can go on a television studio and start throwing, uh, balls around with a robotic, uh, mobile robot.
We're in a studio right now, we could.
We could try it. I would need, I would need, uh, my partners from the robotics team to help me.
Oh, well, next time.
Yeah, we could work on that.
Okay, we have the M S B A eligibility period overview, that's the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Okay, so in your packets, this, um, uh, what I've tried to do is give you, uh, basically an overview of what we've been invited into as a school system. Basically, the eligibility period is a two-hundred-and-seventy-day period where the district and the town, um, show that they can complete, um, these eight requirements and provide what the M S B A calls a deliverable, um, and those deliverables are on the second sheet that I gave you. And these items range from something, uh, as simple as an initial compliance certification, which is just a legal document saying that the town and the district will follow the M S B A guidelines and rules for any process, uh, in which we enter, to, uh, providing them with a more in-depth educational profile of what exists for educational programming at, um, East Long Meadow High School, and what could exist, where do we think we're going, uh, in the future? Because that's going to be important for any, um, future comprehensive project. Then finally, as you go through this, uh, a couple other key items are, they would like to see a, an enrollment projection. We've given them an enrollment projection in each of our statements of interest that we've sent to them the last, uh, six years, and so it'd be taking that enrollment projection, updating it, but also then, like anything else with their processes, they have certain questions that, uh, they'll ask that might be different from, say, um, the enrollment projections that we usually have done through, um, N E S D E C.
How many years enrollment projection are they looking for, do you know?
The, the ten years is what they look for, but then they also ask for certain specifics that, um, you may need, and I haven't seen that paperwork yet. That I will have to complete, so I would be able to use the N E S D E C updated enrollment projection as a base, and then we would have to answer other, um, the way it was described to me is it's, um, then it becomes sort of a negotiation in terms of what we agree on district and town, and M S B A is what our projected enrollment might be, you know, ten years out. Because obviously, that's going to be utilized as you continue through the eligibility period as something that becomes part of a study. Okay, so we're doing some kind of comprehensive project for X enrollment down the road.
Right, that, yeah, okay, it all makes sense.
And so as we go through this, this two-hundred-and-seventy-day period, a couple things that we need to know. One, of the eleven districts who are invited into the Mass School Building Authority process of the eligibility period, they scaffold when they start. So, the East Long Meadow Public Schools eligibility, eligibility period begins June first. So really, it's awesome news, um, and we want to explain it to as many people, uh, who would like to understand this process, and I think that's something that, um, I need to begin, and hopefully with your help. We begin with town council, with interested parties and so forth. But one of the things that's going to be really important that we say is, they're not looking, they being the Mass School Building Authority, they're not looking for these products until after June first. There are certain things we can start on, one would be communicating what the process is, what we're doing, what, what does, um, the study entail? And then ultimately, as we are informing and working with the town council, the last part of the requirements, as you can see on that second page, is that, um, we would need to appropriate the amount of money for a feasibility study to, um, be executed. And that feasibility study would then really give us the engineering and the more specific numbers of what type of comprehensive projects can happen here at East Long Meadow High School, whether that be a new building, they would look at all of that, or a comprehensive renovation. They always throw out the idea of an addition, I don't know that that would apply here. Um, you know, that might apply if you were looking at, um, overcrowding that was coming.
Yeah.
In, in a few years. You know, with our challenges, where you're looking at electrical system. You know, with our challenges, where you're looking at electrical system and HVAC and roofs and things like that, you're really looking at a comprehensive project. But they need to do that study before they'll enter into any kind of project funding agreement. However, if the money's appropriated, your partnership with the MSBA continues, and you're being reimbursed for the feasibility study. So it'll be very similar to the accelerated repair program where we appropriated the full cost of, say, the roof at Meadowbrook. However, once we did that and we showed the certified vote to the MSBA, the town and the district entered into a project funding agreement with the MSBA where they were reimbursing us up to fifty-five percent for eligible costs. So it's, it's an assistance program that as long as we follow the guidelines and the steps, really helps you get to where you wanna go.
Each of these eight steps, do they require a school committee vote? Or is, is it, these are just tasks that are done by...
There are, there are certain ones that will require a school committee vote, like putting the school building committee together. Most likely, we would have to have a vote and an acceptance.
Do we know what that looks like?
Yes, they have guidelines as to, you know, who should be on it. Then there's also some local control
Yep.
in terms of other people that we may feel.
How many, how many roughly?
They don't necessarily give you a set number, but they definitely are looking for, you know, at least one, if not two, school committee members, superintendent, assistant superintendent for business. They want the executive from the town side, who'd have the town manager. From there, they talk about someone who is knowledgeable on the town side on capital projects and facilities. So we probably want either Bruce Fenney or Joe Dunn, who basically run capital projects for the town through the Department of Public Works. And then they also talk about community members, but they give you some guidelines or recommendations around, you know, how would you advertise that to get some people who are knowledgeable of either architecture or construction and that type of thing? So you have a committee that is experienced and can really help the town look at some of these things as you go down the road. So that would be one item. Obviously, the, the vote to appropriate money would be another item that would need a vote. I think the other ones, basically, we have to complete, we would need signatures, initial compliance certifications, you know, signatures of school committee chair, town manager and so forth. Maintenance and capital planning, we actually did that for both accelerated repair projects. And so that's just a more in-depth look of what we've provided them in the statement of interest, give them more specifics in terms of projects we've recently completed, what's, you know, how do we utilize the, the bid process, as well as what specifically we do in terms of maintaining our buildings.
So is the fifty-five percent just a general assumption?
Fifty-five percent is what we have received for both accelerated repair projects.
Okay.
So it's, you know, a benchmark, if you will.
Yeah, okay.
It, it may not be the exact percentage we get in reimbursement.
But it's in the ballpark.
It's in the ballpark.
Okay.
Right.
Because I think that's an important thing that everybody knows.
Right.
That if it's, if it's one-point-two or one-point-three million, fifty-five percent or, or thereabouts is coming back to the town.
Correct.
And the town isn't on the hook for that.
You're not on, on the hook for the whole study.
Right.
What, what basically you have, we have to continue to show is that as long as we complete these requirements and we're timely and upfront and communicating well, then the MSBA continues in the partnership the same way they've done with us for the accelerated repair projects at Meadowbrook.
See, these are all important facts that the public needs to realize, as well as other committee members and boards throughout the town, that, you know, this, just because we are invited in, that's only the first step, that there's many other steps that have to be completed.
So I think to that point, the first article in the reminder was, was helpful. I know that the reporter from the reminder has reached out again and is looking for this type of update. What, you know, so what is the eligibility period? What is the timeframe? What does community readiness mean?
Yeah.
So I'm trying to put together some information so that we can have that out in the, in the reminder as well, and then continue to have these discussions, I think. Certainly, getting on a town council agenda to explain this makes a lot of sense. And we've invited the town manager, 'cause she hasn't had an opportunity to really tour the school. And so she's gonna do that with us on the thirtieth, I believe, in the afternoon. We've had a meeting with her. Mrs. Blair and I had a meeting with her around a number of things, but obviously, this came up as well. And so, very good meeting. So I, I think going forward, the, the conversations will be good.
Sounds good.
All right, our last item for this evening is our discussion from executive session regarding stipend for ELHS administration.
I make a motion to approve the stipend for ELHS administration as discussed in executive session.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded by, pick your choice. Antonella, see?
Antonella.
There you go. Yeah, thank you. Further discussion, edev.org. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed nay? Motion carries five to zero. Okay.
End of the night.
End of the night. Uh, Mr. Mackey, thank you so much. And I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded discussion. Hearing on all's favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay? That carries five to zero. Thank you and good night.